Session resume.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the additional reference of business and may ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills, solution and proceeding as well communication and committee reports. Sumo, Mr. Speaker. Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the titles and bills on additional reference of business.
Additional reference of business bills on first reading. House Bill Number 8836, renewing for another 25 years the franchise granted to Lucban Telephone System Incorporated, Representative Inverga.
To the Comedian Legislative Franchises.
House Bill Number 8837, amending the Philippine Mining Act of 1995 by streamlining the processes in the conduct of mineral exploration, Representative Pichai.
To the Comedian Natural Resources.
House Bill Number 8845, promoting the health and well-being of Filipinos providing for the purpose, the establishment of a community fitness and wellness center in every barangay in the country, Representative Villar.
To the Comedian Health.
House Bill Number 8846, creating an assistance and livelihood program for returning OFW, making them part of the coverage of small business corporation, Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Overseas and Workers Affairs.
House Bill 8847, providing for a seven-day special emergency leave for all workers in the public and private sector directly affected by natural calamities and/or disasters, Representative C. Alvarado.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation and the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill Number 8848, mandating internet service providers to give rebates and payment adjustment for their uninterrupted and poor services, Representative C. Alvarado.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill Number 8854, creating a new schools division office in the First District of Zamboanga del Norte to be stationed in Palangko, Zamboanga del Norte to cover supervision of nine school districts, Representative Alusos.
To the Comedian Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 8855, granting benefits and incentive to accredited Bantay Dagat, Representative Espino.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 8856, mandating all barangays to create a registry of skilled workers, Representative Espino.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill Number 8857, instituting a medical reserve corps, Representative Espino.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 8858, mandating the establishment of a national emergency stockpile, Representative Espino.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill Number 8859, promoting tree planting causes among Filipino youth through education and civic management engagement to increase their social responsibility for the environment, Representative Espino.
To the Special Committee on Forestation.
House Bill Number 8863, establishing a fish port in Barangay Agusan in the Second District of Cagendoro City, Representative Rodriguez.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill Number 8864, establishing a fish port in Kugman, Cagendoro City, Representative Rodriguez.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill Number 8865, establishing a fish port in Lapasan, Cagendoro City, Representative Rodriguez.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill Number 8866, establishing a fish port in Macabalan, Cagendoro City, Representative Rodriguez.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill Number 8867, establishing a fish port in Puerto, Cagendoro City, Representative Rodriguez.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill Number 8868, establishing a fish port in Tablon, Cagendoro City, Representative Rodriguez.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
Resolutions, House Resolution 1619, commending the Honorable Mayor Victor Mayarejes V. Cosoto of Pasig City for being recognized as one of the international anti-corruption champions by the United States Department of State, Representative Tan Angelina.
To the Comedian Rules.
House Resolution 1620, recognizing the efforts of the IATF, EID, UP's OCTA Research Group, the Business Groups and other private organizations, Philippine Foundation for Vaccination, the Virus LGUs and the Philippine National Red Cross in realizing the vaccination program of the government in a tulung-tulung manner in uniquely Filipino style of bayanian, Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Health.
House Resolution 1621, expressing profound sympathy and deep condolences of the house to the brave family of the late Irenyo Ayong Maliksi, Representative Loyola Abaya Rivilla Advincula Barzaga, Father Luis Remulia and Tolentino.
To the Comedian Rules.
House Resolution 1622, urging the house through the Committee on Senior Citizens to investigate the malicious practice of food delivery applications of not applying the senior citizen and PWD discounts in transactions made through them, Representative Herrera D. and Ordanes.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports, Report Number 793 of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Bill Number 8870.
To the Comedian Rules, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Mujib Hataman of the Lone District of Basilan to avail of the question of privilege.
May I know at two...
Madam Speaker, I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege.
DS Hataman, may I know the nature of the matter on which you arise today?
This is in connection with the warrantless arrest of seven members of my constituents, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Please proceed, you have 10 minutes.
Mr. Speaker, fellow members of the House, Magandang araw po sa ating lahat. I hope we are all keeping safe. Binabati ko rin ang mga kababaihan ng ating kapulungan. Kasama ang mga sumusuporta sa kanilang mga karapatan. Happy Women's Month! I take the floor on the matter of personal and collective privilege. Bilang kinatawan ng aking distrito at bilang kinatawan ng mas malawak na bangsa moro community sa ating bansa. I rise as a colleague, as a fellow Filipino and as a fellow human being with rights. Rights that should be upheld for all, especially those who do not have the privilege to address this August chamber. Mr. Speaker, noong madaling araw ng ikas... labing pito ng febrero, kasama ang mga police bakoor, inarresto ng NICA, or National Intelligence Coordinating Agency, at ng National Capital Region Police Office ang labing isang individual sa bakoor kabite. Sa using construction site, pinadala sila, pinadapa sila, at tinanong kung sino sa kanila ang mga Muslim. Ang pitos sa kanila galing pang Basilan, ang distritong kinatawan ko. Ang sabi ng mga kaanak nila, 'yung iba, apat na taon ng construction worker dito sa Metro Manila. Inarresto sila ayon sa mga nakalap naming impormasyon ng walang judicial warrant. This happened more than, for almost two weeks ago. Mr. Speaker, walang nangyaring pasabi sa mga kaanak. Hanggang ngayon, walang makapagsabi kung nasaan sila. Hinanap namin sila sa bakoor police, hindi nila alam kung nasaan. Hinanap namin sa kamkrame at kapbagong diwa, wala rin daw silang alam. Walang makakasagot sa maraming tanong na tumatakbo sa isip ng kanilang mga pamilya. Nasaan na sila? Bakit sila inarresto? Bakit hanggang ngayon walang maibigay na malinaw na detalye at paliwanag ang mga umarresto sa kanila? Buhay pa ba sila? Siguro naman, our offices from the NICA and NCRPO can at least extend some kindness to the families of these individuals. Mabigat sa dibdib hang hindi mo man lang alam kung ano na ang lagay ng kaanak mo. Madam Speaker, I'm sure that like me, many of our colleagues in this chamber understand how such an incident echoes the atrocities committed under the martial law regime. Huwag naman po sanang magbalik ang ganoong kaalakaran. Madam Speaker, this is not the first time that members of the Muslim community were harassed, discriminated against, abused, denied due process, or outright disappeared. In fact, on February 16, a day before the bakoor incident, dinukot ng mga nagpakilalang ahente ng NBI, ang magasawang sinamus Liminsaban Mantawil at Bay Munira Saban. Nakatayo lang sila sa harap ng placement agency nila sa malate. Papunta ng mga... pagpunta ng mga kaanak sa NBI, wala daw sa kanila ang magasawang Saban, wala daw silang kinalaman sa pagdukot sa kanila. Noong namang February 19, Madam Speaker, dapat magpunta lang sa mahjid o mosque para magdasal ng Friday or July. Si Sulaiman Bounto Muhammad, nakamaong at sinelas lang si Sulaiman, hindi na siya nakauwi hanggang sa ngayon. Noong January 19 ng hapon, nakatayo lang din sa may gate ng Mahalika Village sa Tagig, si Abdul Muin Tula. Kitang-kita sa CCTV ang pagbaba ng mga armadong kalalakihan sa isang pulang Toyota Inova. Naka-shorts, naka-t-shirt, naka-sumbrero at maskara, at may kargang mga baril, kasama na ang hinihinalang modified M16. Meron pang mga backup vehicle. Ang sabi ng mga ulat, nagpakilala din daw na NBI ang mga ito bago dukutin si Abdul Muin. Hanggang ngayon, nawawala pa ang magasawang Saban, si Sulaiman Bounto Muhammad at si Abdul Muin Tula. Kabilang sila sa listahan nitong mga nakaraang taon ng sunod-sunod na pagdukot at pagkawala ng sa mga Muslim sa kamaynilaan. Walang makapagsabi kung ano ang nangyari. Nag-aalala pa rin ang mga kaanak nila, at hindi rin natin masagot kung ano ang ginagawa ng mga autoridad para hanapin sila. The bakoor incident, Madam Speaker, might mark the first time that people were arrested under the new anti-terror law. Kaya kailangan natin itong tutukan to ensure that the safeguards under this law and indeed under the Constitution are being followed. Abu sayap man ang mga inarresto o hindi ang tanong, nasunod ba ang proseso sa pag-arresto, kinilala ba ang karapatan nila? Lilinawin ko lang din, Madam Speaker. Lahat tayo gustong sugpuin ang terorismo. Perhaps me, more than most, given my personal experience as a Muslim, kami ang tinatamaan, nasasaktan at namamatayan kapag may mga bumabaling sa dahas. Kung totoong terorista sila, maging transparent sana sa proseso ng paghuli, isakdal, litisin at panagutin. Kung hindi naman sila terorista, walang dahilan para dukutin at punuin ng pangamba ang kanilang mga kaanak. At paano natin matutukoy kung terorista nga o hindi ang isang pinaghinalaan? Simple, Mr. Speaker, sa pagsunod sa tamang proseso at sa pagsunod sa batag. Malinaw, Madam Speaker, na hindi solusyon sa violent extremism ang pang-aapi at paniniil sa mga Muslim. Ilagay natin ang sarili sa puwesto ng mga anak ng mga hunuling ito. Nagtatanong sila, bakit ganoon ang ginawa sa kanilang mga magulang? Ano ang kasalanan nila? Kung walang kasalanan ang mga hinuli, di ba lalo lang akong nagtatanim ng galit sa sistema? Doesn't oppression make the risk of radicalization greater? Di ba pinapalala lang nito ang problema kesa sa solusyonan? Madam Speaker, I stand now to ensure that my fellow Muslims, our countrymen are not relegated to memory. Kawawa ang mga nangambang kaanak, Madam Speaker. It pains me to imagine kung ano ang pinagdadaanan ng mga nawawalang taong ito sa ngayon. Kung hindi natin ito bibigyan ng sapat na attention sa katunayan, kung hindi ito naitimre sa amin para mabigyan ng sapat na attention, baka sa ngayon wala nang nagsasalita tungkol dito. Mahirap isipin kung ano ang pwedeng kahinanatnan ng mga hinuli. Their rights, Madam Speaker, are our rights. At kapag nilabag ang mga karapatan ito, hindi malayong isipin ang napipintong paglabag sa mga karapatan natin. Hindi maliit na bagay ang pagdaraanan ng mga Muslim na banggit ko, Miss Madam Speaker. Pagdukot ito, kidnapping ito, nananawagan ako sa Kongreso. Sa kapulungan nating ito, naimbistigahan ang mga kaso upang mapanatag ang kanilang mga kaanak sa lalo't madaling panahon. Hadzma Pandapitan Munsing, Arshid Abdul Kadir, Arham Mustafa Juhur, Tahrin Jalil, Nulham Tadjai, Dam Hamid, mga Muslim, mga taga-Basilan, Muslimin Saban Montawil at Bay Munira Saban, Sulaiman Muhammad Abdul Muin Tula. Uulit-ulitin natin ang mga pangalan nila. Siguruhin natin na matutukoy kung nasaan na sila, kung ano ang kinahinatnan ng pag-arresto sa kanila, kung bakit sila inarresto, kung nasunod ba ang tamang proseso, kung may aabangan pa ba tayong pag-uwi nila. Dahil kung hindi, baka humaba pa ang listahan ng mga pangalan na ito, baka sa sunod, tayo mismo mapabilang na sa listahang ito. Maraming-maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wal barakatuh.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Hataman to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action.
Are there any objections? Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of the resolution of both houses number two as contained in Committee Report 735. May I ask the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution?
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of RBH II.
RBH II, Resolution of Both Houses Proposing Amendments to Certain Economic Provisions of the 1987 Constitution of the Republic of the Philippines, particularly on Articles 2, 14, and 16.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status of the House Resolution is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. I respectfully request that we recognize the sponsor, the Honorable Alfredo Garbin.
The Chairperson of the Committee on Constitutional Amendment, the Honorable Alfredo Garbin is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Argel Joseph T. Cabatbat of Partilist Magsasaka for his interpolation.
The Honorable Cabatbat is recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. Would the sponsor give to some of our declaratory questions?
Willingly, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, we're tinkering here with the supreme law of the land. So, my concern is that we should come up with the best written document that we can produce. After all, this will reverberate through the ages, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. We are now trying to amend some portions in the Constitution, particularly those provisions that impose limitations on foreign ownership of some of our industries. And right now, we are proposing amendments to those provisions that will effectively remove those limitations. My concern, Madam Speaker, Mr. Chair, is simply on the matters of style. Because if we insist on the way our amendments are designed or are worded, it's like putting a cage with the key on it. Para po bang nagligay tayo ng limitation sa Constitution dati no 1986? Tapos ngayon, 'yung tinatanggal natin 'yung limitation, why not do away with those provisions? Po ba, tinatanggal na rin naman pala natin 'yung limitation, sa matter of style, perhaps we can entertain wording it differently by doing away with the provisions concerned? I would like to ask the opinion of our colleague from a hobby called Partilist, the good sponsor, Madam Speaker.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to Congressman Cabatbat. As to the question whether we should totally do away with the restrictive economic provisions of the Constitution or just incorporate the phrase "unless otherwise provided by law", the speaker, including the committee of which adopted RBH II, prefer to incorporate the phrase "unless otherwise provided by law", because this incorporation will have the effect of creating a condition. The condition is that there must be a law that must be passed by Congress and that when it is fulfilled, it will negate the provisions or the restrictions to which it attach. So meaning, hindi ho automatic na maalis 'yung restriction is just that a condition is created and that the condition, the fulfillment of which will totally negate the restrictive economic provisions of the specific provisions of the Constitution. It is also one way of putting a safeguard, because legislation is in effect a safeguard. And it also make the rigid provision flexible. Meaning, Congress will be given the flexibility to enact the laws that will be responsive to the present economic and technological conditions. So in that way, we have enough safeguard. We can relax the restrictive economic provision or tighten the same depending upon the available data and depending upon the prevailing circumstance of time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. I agree that if we insist on the proposed amendments the way it is worded right now, the limitations will not be automatically lifted once we have approved the proposed amendments in a plebiscite. My only concern is that we can have the same effect if we do away with those provisions. After all, foreign ownership over those industries mentioned will, I think, look for a guidance legislation before they can enter our country infusing their capital as we intended to be. But nonetheless, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, I humbly submit, of course, if that is the intention of the proponents that the listing of the limitation should not be automatic, then we can proceed with the wordings of our proposed amendments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The intention really is to provide flexibility to Congress. Because if we do away with the restriction, then it will be again a rigid provision of the Constitution wherein anything that we want to tighten or relax, we will resort again to amending the Constitution. But in just incorporating the phrase "unless otherwise provided by law", it affords flexibility to Congress to enact laws that will be responsive to the present circumstance.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, for that answer. Although I respectfully disagree that if we adopt a different way of amending the Constitution and that is by deleting those provisions concerned, I don't think that it will be very... it will rob the Congress of the flexibility. For example, if we eliminate totally the provisions on media ownership from our Constitution, we can always pass a law that will impose that same limitation through an ordinary legislation. So, I think that in my proposal to go away with those provisions, I don't think the Congress is being deprived of the flexibility to legislate the ordinary measures that will impose or reinstate the limitations found in our present Constitution. Anyway, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, we can agree, disagree. I am just concerned and I just want this matter to be brought up so we can also see if we can improve the wordings of our proposed amendments. And I agree, I humbly submit that even if we delete those provisions entirely or anything similar to it, I believe that we are not removing the flexibility of the Congress to reinstate those limitations. Anyway, let me proceed to my next question, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. I am very happy that not included in this proposed amendments is the foreign ownership of land. Because from the very beginning, Magsasaka Partilist is... Because from the very beginning, Magsasaka Partilist is against opening up our lands, particularly our agricultural lands, to foreign ownership. Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, I would like to ask if with this present economic provisions to be amended, since the proposed opening of foreign ownership, opening of our land to foreign ownership, are we expecting that foreign capital will start to pour in in our country once these amendments are approved in a plebiscite?
Well, the incorporation of the phrase "unless otherwise provided by law", when ratified by the Filipino people, it will send a positive signal to the investment community on how we create a friendly foreign direct investment environment here in our country. It is very important that we are particular with a signaling effect. Once we send the signal that we are doing something to open up and lift the restriction on foreign equity limitations, then that is a positive signal to the investment community. In fact, in many economic literatures and the studies conducted by independent assessors such as the OECD and the World Bank, it says that one of the determinants of foreign direct investment is the foreign direct investment restriction. And it says that FDI restrictions is an statutory barriers to FDI and other operational restrictions, which are expected to deter FDI by influencing investors' choice among different location. Kasi ho, pag merong restriction sa kanilang partisipasyon sa ano man sektor ng ating ekonomiya, or in any areas of the national patrimony, na-iinfluensyon ho 'yung kanilang desisyon to choose the best location. Say for example, if the Philippines impose foreign equity limitations on public utilities or engaging in the areas of national patrimony, and that their equity is limited only to 40%, then their decision is influence to choose on those location that does not impose any foreign equity limitations, like in Vietnam, like in Singapore, and other neighboring Southeast Asian nations. So yun po ang tinitingnan natin dito na base sa pag-aaral ng iba't-ibang independent assessors, gaya ng OECD at ng World Bank. Ay ito talaga pinakamalaking factor kung bakit mahina pumasok sa atin itong foreign direct investment. This really, it deters the flow of foreign capital due to the fact that we have this foreign equity limitations, which is enshrined in our present Constitution.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. I agree that if foreign capital will start to pour in into our country, this will really translate to development. Considering that we are not anymore opening our lands to foreign ownership, I have additional reasons to support this measure, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. Unfortunately, we all know that there is always a way around these prohibitions. Say for example, a foreign corporation, since they cannot own a land, they would just resort to long-term lease of our lands, short of ownership. All of the attributes of ownership, except for the, all the attributes of ownership, they can enjoy, like possession, utilization, save for the ownership. My concern, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, once the foreign capital starts pouring in to our country... Alam niyo po, sa nakikita ko, wala namang kakulangan sa pera 'yung foreign capital, marami silang pera. Akulang sa kanila ay, I think, lupa. At ang kinatakot ko, baka pagpasok dito ng foreign capital, hindi man sila makapamili ng lupa. They can resort to other things like long-term leases of those lands. Instead of dedicating it to agriculture, they will just engage in land banking, development, and other things not agricultural, which I think is not good for our food security. Parami-buwan populasyon ng Pilipinas, paunti ng paunti 'yung ating nasasaka. Tapos, wala pa tayong kasiguraduhan na pagpumasok dito ang kapital galing sa ibang bansa. Ay, hindi ito magagamit para mas lalo pang kumunti 'yung mga lupa natin para sa pagsasaka, para sa ating food security. Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, there is a way for us to safeguard, to impose a safeguard, so that those things will not happen once the foreign capital comes in. And that is, of course, to enact a comprehensive land use act. Unfortunately, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, we have yet to enact a comprehensive land use act, that will ensure that we will have enough agricultural lands for our food security. Di na po food security, I don't want to use the term food security yet. I want to use the term food sovereignty, so that we should be sure that we can feed ourselves by using our lands for our people. So my question, Mr. Sponsor, Madam Speaker, considering that we have yet to enact a comprehensive land use act, what guarantees do we have that that scenario will not happen once we have successfully amended our economic provisions?
Unang-unang ho, linawin lang ho natin na, Mr. Speaker, na hindi ho kasama sa proposed amendments 'yung pagbebenta ng lupa sa mga dayuhang nangangapital. Ang sakop lamang ho ay 'yung pagpaparenta or long-term lease of those agricultural lands, which is part of the lands of public domain that is alineable. Now, dun ho sa agam-agam ng ating kasama, Congressman Cabatbat, na baka ho maabuso or ito ho ay ikakasira ng ating agrikultura, wag ho kayo mag-alala dahil 'yung incorporation po ng "unless otherwise provided by law", dun ho sa Article 12, Article 14, and Article 16 of the 1987 Constitution, does not remove automatically the restrictions provided in those provisions of the Constitution, but it only creates a condition. And what is that condition? That condition is by Congress passing a law, so that that provision to which it is attached will negate the said restriction. Ano ho ang epekto ng isang legislasyon ng Kongreso? Yun ho 'yung safeguard na sinasabi ho natin. That's why we don't want to do away totally with those restrictions. We wanted to have a condition by passing a legislation to see to it that all safeguards will be incorporated, considering national interest, national sovereignty, food security. And let us disabuse our minds that when we approve these amendments and ratified by the Filipino people, all foreign capitals, if they want to invest in the country under the conditions set forth by Congress based on the legislation we have passed here, will still be subject to regulatory laws. Sila ho ay dapat din sumunod sa ating mga batas, sa ating mga regulasyon. So, wag ho kayo mag-alala dahil tayo rin ho ang gagawa ng legislation. Tayo rin ho ang pagsisiguro na 'yung safeguard patungkol sa inyong concern, lalong-lalo na sa agrikultura, ay kasama po 'yan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, for that very enlightening and assuring answer from our esteemed colleague. Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, I agree now that we can impose safeguards in the subsequent legislations that we will be passing after these amendments. But I want to take this opportunity, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, to call the attention of our colleagues, that the National Land Use Act, I think, is one of the priority measures of our President, Rodrigo Duterte. And it is just timely to pass this law either simultaneously before or right after we have concluded this proposed economic provisions amendments to the Constitution. So, I hope that we can have, aside from those safeguards mentioned by our esteemed colleague, Congressman Garbin, I hope that we will also be able to pass a National Land Use Act to add further safeguards to secure our land for our food security and food sovereignty. So, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, I have no further questions for now. Maraming salamat po sa inyong mga sagot. And good luck to us. Sana po makapag-produce tayo ng magandang amendment dito po sa ating ginagawa ngayon. Thank you. Madam Speaker, I have no further questions for now.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of Resolution of both Houses, Number 2.
Any objection?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8781, under Committee Report 766. The parliamentary status... I'm sorry. Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 8737, as contained in Committee Report Number 754. The parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that we recognize the sponsor, the Honorable Roman Romolo of the Lone District. I move that we, I move that we request the Secretary General to read the title of the House bill.
House Bill 8737, an act regulating the conduct of off-campus educational activities by public and private schools.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill, it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that we recognize the sponsor, the Honorable Roman Romolo of the Lone District of Pasig City.
Chair recognizes Congressman Romolo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. I have the honor to sponsor this House bill, an act regulating the conduct of off-campus educational activities by public and private schools. Currently, there is no legislation on this matter. These are subject to regulations issued by the Department of Education and the Commission on Higher Education. This bill proposes that we set up a framework for off-campus educational activities that are not part of the curriculum, but may add to the educational learning curve of our students. I also move, Mr. Speaker, that the explanatory note of said proposed House bill be made part of the records. I so move, Mr. Speaker. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8737.
Mr. Speaker, there is a pending motion that the explanatory note of the bills also be read into the records of the plenary.
Any objection? Tabi naan, the explanatory note is...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8737.
Any objection? Tabi naan, standed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8781, under Committee Report 766, and may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Secretary, please proceed.
House Bill 8781, an act requiring personnel of tourism establishment, tourism-oriented organization, and all other persons providing tourism-related services to undergo basic first aid training.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that we recognize the sponsors of the bill, beginning with the Honorable Sol Aragones for her sponsorship speech.
Any objection? Ms. Aragones, given the floor. Please proceed, Ms. Aragones.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
You have the floor, Congresswoman.
Mr. Speaker, honorable colleagues, it is my privilege to sponsor today House Bill 8781, entitled "An Act Requiring Personnel of Tourism Establishments, Tourism-Oriented Organizations, and All Other Persons Providing Tourism-Related Services to Undergo Basic First-Aid Training", authored by Representative Ruffi Biazon. Mr. Speaker, to ensure the safety of our tourists as they travel around the country, House Bill 8781 mandates that personnel of tourism establishments, tourism-oriented organizations, and all other persons providing tourism-related services should undergo basic first aid training provided by the Philippine Red Cross or any other reputable training institutions. This bill aims to guarantee that these personnel are properly equipped with the necessary skills to respond to emergency health situations. A swift and decisive response during emergency health situations can definitely appease what could be a distressing situation for tourists. In case of accidents or injuries, when an accident or disaster happens in the vicinity of a tourism establishment or a destination, the staff would always find themselves in the role of first responders before any professional assistance can arrive. Mr. Speaker, this bill provides not only an additional sense of physical safety, but also an added psychological assurance. This will further encourage people from diverse walks of life to explore our country's numerous tourism destinations with a diminished sense of apprehension and worry. Ensuring that our tourism workers are equipped with the skills to administer basic first aid is an important consideration for creating a more secure and safe tourism industry. It is in delight, Mr. Speaker, that the Committee on Tourism asked this August body for the approval of House Bill 8781. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you. Congresswoman, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we also recognize the co-sponsor, the Honorable Rufino Biazon, for his sponsorship speech.
Honorable Biazon is recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have the honor to sponsor House Bill Number 8781 together with my esteemed colleague, Representative Sol Aragones, Chair of the Committee on Tourism, who has been a staunch promoter of tourism in the various congressional districts of the members of this house through her viral social media production, Kong Tour. Representative Aragones is undoubtedly a valuable mover of Philippine tourism, particularly in the legislative branch of government. If the pandemic did not steal the year 2020 away from us, she would most likely have done as much work for tourism in the field as she has done within the halls of this house. In 2019, the Philippines logged in 8,260,913 visitor arrivals, which was an increase of 15% from the previous year. Compared to the visitor arrivals in 2010, it has been more than a 230% increase. The influx of those tourists brought in visitor receipts amounting to 482.15 billion pesos, up by 18.80% from 2018. Figures from the Department of Tourism show that inbound visitor receipts in 2015 only increased by about 2.51 billion in 2016. But from 2016 onwards, the amount increased by an average of 84 billion a year. I have no doubt in my mind that if COVID-19 had not interfered with our lives, we would have at this time surpassed the 2019 increase. In fact, the Philippines suffered a 73% drop in foreign visitor arrivals in the first seven months of 2020, with tourism revenue dropping 72%. A breakdown of the profile visitors in 2019 showed that 1.68% of arrivals were for the purpose of visiting friends and relatives, while 3.43% visited the Philippines for business purposes, while a majority comprising 59.34% came to the country for vacations or leisure. Vacations and leisure trips are where a wide sector of Filipinos earn from tourism. From services to retail, big businesses, down to the individual street food vendor, tourists spend to enjoy the experience of visiting the Philippines. I have always believed that the Philippines has an edge in tourism because Filipinos, by our nature, are warmly hospitable and eager to entertain guests. We are blessed with the natural resources that make almost every part of our country Instagrammable. In fact, an international travel website, Big Seven Travel, named the Philippines the second most Instagrammable place for 2021, ahead of Paris, which came in at third, New York City at fourth, London at even ninth place. Only Tokyo, Japan came ahead of the Philippines out of a total of 50 places around the world chosen by Big Seven Travel. We are experiencing growth in our tourism industry because as the world has gotten smaller with social media, more and more people from other countries are seeing parts of the Philippines that attract them to visit the Pearl of the Orient. When in the past, we had to pour resources to place ads, commercials, and other traditional and expensive means of drumming up publicity to entice tourists to include Philippines in their travel plans, nowadays, anyone with a camera phone and a social media account like Facebook, Instagram, Pinterest, and others can provide or promote the country with an upload of a picture. But even the gains that we have already achieved in recent years, there is still so much potential for growth. As long as we are able to tap and exploit those potentials, we are certain to log in more visitors and catch up with our successful neighbors in the region. It doesn't take much of a specialized study to have an idea what we need to do for tourism. All of us have been tourists, both domestic and abroad, and just by experience, we know what makes a destination successful, one that will make tourists want to visit and come back for more. It might opinion as a tourist myself, we just need to give tourists cash. No, it's not cash as in money. It's C-A-S-H. Convenience, accessibility, safety and security, and hospitality. Convenience is about experiencing amenities that make travel comfortable and easy, from how a traveler's entry into the country is hassle-free, the ease of navigating and moving around the country through availability of tourist assistance, the availability of credit card facilities, as well as connectivity and telecommunications even in remote destinations. Accessibility is about the ability to go from one place to another, whether it be by mass public transportation or special limousine service. Safety and security is about the tourist being able to visit places without having to fear any harm or with the optimism that if he or she falls ill or gets injured, immediate professional help is available. And of course, hospitality is having people oriented and trained in professionally relating to and accommodating tourists. With these in mind, particularly on safety and security of tourists, this representation introduced House Bill Number 786, entitled "An Act Requiring Personnel of Business Establishments, Members of Organizations or Associations, and All Other Persons Providing Tourism Services to Undergo First-Aid Training." After undergoing technical working group sessions and careful consideration by the Committee on Tourism, refinements have been introduced and the substitute bill has been reported out as House Bill 8781. Basically, the bill ambitions that every worker in tourism establishments, tourism-oriented organizations, and other persons providing tourism-related services to be certified first-aiders and be able to give immediate assistance and care to tourists who may be in need. The idea for the bill was brought about by incidents reported in the news where tourists who got injured were unable to get crucial first aid after injuries or accidents due to the lack of trained personnel. Many instances in my own experience as a tourist, I have encountered tourism service providers who lack not only trained first-aiders but even a basic first aid kit. I believe that passage of this bill into law will add to the plus points of Philippine, providing more value to our country as a tourist destination. If this house will approve this in plenary, it will actually be the second time that the wisdom of the house, the members of the house from the 17th Congress and the 18th Congress deem this proposal worthy of becoming a republic act. With this, Mr. Speaker, we seek the House's approval of this bill. Thank you very much.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8781.
Any objection? Tabi naan. Suspended.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize Honorable Amihilda Sangkopan of Partilis Amin for her manifestation.
Congresswoman Amihilda of Partilis Amin is recognized.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for allowing me to deliver my manifestation of support to the privileged speech delivered earlier on in this plenary session delivered by the Deputy Speaker Mujeeb Hataman of the Lone District of Basilan on enforced disappearances of Muslims in our communities. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu. Mr. Speaker, foremost, allow me to congratulate, manifest my strong support and great appreciation to my mentor and our beloved Deputy Speaker and the Lone District of Basilan representative Mujeeb Es Hataman on his privileged speech, "The Extrajudicial Arrest of Muslims." Mr. Speaker, allow me to express to you the depth of despair and desperation being felt by families whose loved ones were said to be arrested on February 15 and were not seen nor heard of again up until today. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, hindi ko po maubos maisip kung gaano kahirap ang kalagayan ng mga pamilyang ito na bumabangon araw-araw, na balot ng lungkot, matinding pag-aalala, at takot para sa kanilang nawawalang kapamilya. Na habang pilit nilang ginagampanan, ang kanilang mga pang-araw-araw na tungkulin ay binabangabag ang kanilang isip sa nawawalang mahal nila sa buhay. More than legal remedies and direction, these families also wanted a clear explanation as to why their family members were hauled away on that fateful day without preamble of the nature of their arrest. Dumarami na po ang bilang Mr. Speaker ng mga nawawalang tao matapos arrestuhin ng mga otoridad. And it may continue to duso kung mananatili lamang tayong makikinig at mag-aabang sa balita ng kung sino na ang sumunod. The lives of Muslims are as equal as yours and as mine, Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues. Sana po huwag nating kalimutan, lalo na doon sa mga nagpapatupad ng batas, na ang karapatan ni Pedro ay katulad din sa karapatan ni Huan. At ang karapatan ni Huan ay katulad din ng karapatan ni Abdul, ni Bashir, o ni Ahmad, o ni Dalil. With this, I join Deputy Speaker Hataman's call to our Committee on Human Rights and that of the Muslim Affairs to conduct an inquiry in aid of legislation on this matter. Maraming maraming salamat po. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu.
Thank you for the manifestation of Lady Congresswoman, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to one-minute suspension.
Then, no objection. Suspended. Does your resume?
Mr. Speaker, with leave of the house, I move that we open the privileged hour.
Objection? Any objection? Tabi naan.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that the gentleman from the Sixth District of Manila, Honorable Benbendito Abante, be recognized to avail the privileged hour.
Before we proceed to the privileged hour, the Chair would like to inquire from the Majority Leader of whether we're in the privileged hour now, Wednesday, or are we sticking to the rules which limit the privileged hour on Mondays? Unless the body decides to suspend the rule, the Chair would enforce it.
Mr. Speaker, earlier I requested everybody with leave of the house.
Yes, I'd like to hear the body. If the body wants to listen to privileged speeches every day, so be it. Otherwise, we have a rule to follow. Privileged speeches are reserved for Mondays after taking up the business of the day. Today is a Wednesday, just to make it clear.
Mr. Speaker, one-minute suspension.
Suspended. Does your?
Mr. Speaker, I move to reiterate my earlier motion to open the privileged hour.
The Chair reiterates the question. Are we approving it unanimously?
Yes, there's no objection, Mr. Speaker.
We will continue with the privileged hour anytime it's taken up on the floor.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
This is the precedent. From here on, we can call for the privileged hour every day. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Only with leave of the house.
Anyway, we recognize the gentleman from the Sixth District. As long as we're clear that there is a rule and we have to suspend the rule.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
If it's suspended, then so be it. Let's listen to the gentleman. I'm sure he's going to deliver words of wisdom.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for allowing us to deliver our privileged speech. Because I believe this to be very appropriate and very important at this time, Mr. Speaker. Today, I'd like to speak on what happened here in Quezon City that occurred several days ago, Mr. Speaker, particularly the 24th of February. Particularly, the 24th of February. I entitled my privileged speech to be senseless deaths and sensible reforms. Heya, Mr. Speaker. Magandang hapon po sa inyo, sa ating mga kasamahan, kaibigan, at katrabaho dito sa camera. My esteemed colleagues in the House of Representatives. It pains this representation, Mr. Speaker, to rise today on a matter of personal privilege. It is painful because it follows the tragic and senseless deaths of law enforcement officers at the hands of fellow officers of the law. These deaths are tragic because the loss of life is always tragic. Mr. Speaker, regardless of the circumstance, but what is particularly painful in this incident, Mr. Speaker, is the utter senselessness of this bloody episode. It simply does not make any sense. Because when people who are supposed to be on the same side of the law shoot at each other, it does not make sense. Because when the bullets from the firearms of law enforcement officers rip to the bodies of fellow law enforcement agents, it does not make sense. Because when four lives are suddenly snapped out in what is now called a "misencounter", it does not make sense. Because when two law enforcement agencies primarily responsible for leading the war on drugs do battle amongst themselves, it does not make sense. Truly, Mr. Speaker, very little in what happened on the night of February 24 makes sense. This is why, my friends and colleagues, I am one of those who have called on this chamber to conduct an inquiry into this bloody incident. While I am aware that we have been asked to wait for the National Bureau of Investigation to finish its investigation before we commence with our own inquiry, I believe that we should nonetheless make it clear to the leaders in our law enforcement agencies that the sensible steps must be taken to prevent the fate of senseless deaths that have haunted law enforcement. After all, Madam Speaker, now, even the firearms and bullets they use came from the hard-earned money of the people which they promised to serve and protect. And, of course, Congress passed their budget. Let me just cite a few examples, Mr. Speaker. In April 2020, an army veteran was shot by police at a quarantine checkpoint in Quezon City. In June of 2020, nine members of the Philippine National Police were involved in the fatal shooting of four army intelligence officers in Holol. In December 2020, a member of the Philippine National Police shot to death a mother and her son in Nueva Ecija. In two of these cases, Madam Speaker, the erring police officers have already been dismissed by the PNP. But the removal of these individuals will not bring back the lives already lost. They will not erase the pain felt by families and friends of the slain. Madam Speaker, this representation recognizes that there are men and women in the Philippine National Police who serve bravely and honorably. We cannot discount that and that they risk life and limb to protect our families. This representation appreciates the sacrifices they have made in efforts to rid our communities of illegal drugs. Sa'as ang kamay ko sa mga bayaning ito. They deserve our respect and our support. But, Madam Speaker, we cannot turn a blind eye to what appears to be a developing culture of violence and death in our Philippine National Police. A culture that was on display in the video shown by Deputy Speaker Mike Romero, who spoke out against the brutal so-called rescue operation of Luma children conducted in the University of San Carlos in Cebu, that I am even moved to question who should be responsible and to whom will we cast the blame. There are those who blame this incident on so-called lapses in judgment, in procedure, or in operations. Lapses, Madam Speaker? Meaning a slight error due to forgetfulness or inattention? Lapses? I again would like to ask the question. Is this what happened on February 24 between the PDIA agents and the Quezon City police officers? Was this a buy-bus, Madam Speaker, or a sale-bus? How did the police know about the asset? Who killed the asset? In law enforcement, however, we have learned that these so-called lapses can even be lethal. Can we now admit that we are living in a culture of violence where even law enforcers become violators of peace and order and are now involved in senseless killings and violence? Are we now ready to admit to what the Good Book says? And I quote, "Their feet are swift to shed blood. Destruction and misery are in their ways, and the way of peace have they not known." End of quote in the Book of Romans, Chapter 3, Verse 15 to 17. This is why, Mr. and Madam Speaker, I urge the leadership of the Philippine National Police and our law enforcement agencies to take a long, hard look at their organizations, at their personnel, and at their operations. It is time for the Philippine National Police to be proactive, to take the initiative, and to consider instituting sensible reforms to address and to prevent these senseless deaths for each day that passes without action on their part. If another day, faith and confidence in law enforcement is eroded. And that is the same thing with PDIA, Madam Speaker. The PNP motto is, I quote, "To serve and protect." And it is our duty, Madam Speaker, to constantly remind their leadership that this motto refers to our citizens and not to them. Bottom line, the people demand a full and honest investigation. And my question is, are we going to get it? Maraming maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity and the privilege to make this speech. Thank you.
Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Deputy Speaker Achenza for his interpolation.
Honorable Lito Achenza is recognized.
The gentleman agreed to answer some questions on the relevance and the importance of the message he delivered this afternoon.
Madam Speaker, I actually promised our leadership that I would not accept any more interpolation because of so many things that we are going to do at this time. So, much as I would like to indulge myself to the interpolation of my good friend, Representative Achenza, I would like to just tell him my regrets, Madam Speaker, that I couldn't be able to allow it because of my commitment not to have any interpolation on this privileged speech. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, pursuant to our rules, we will respect the right of the speaker not to accept an interpolation, and we beg the indulgence of the honorable...
Since the gentleman declines to be interpolated, may I be given a chance to manifest my own sentiments about the issue? Because this issue affects the whole nation and not just the gentleman's district. We would like to manifest our own position on the matter.
We have no objection. May proceed, Honorable Lito Achenza. Please proceed with your manifestation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The gentleman touched on a very important, critical issue today. The incident where a police group tried to kill another police group is something that should scandalize Congress. It should scandalize every Filipino. I'm just saddened that the gentleman from the Sixth District would not even allow questions. So therefore, I'm going to give the answers. Madam Speaker, what happened in Commonwealth Avenue saddened and angered this representation. Never did it happen that policemen hold a gun battle in the main streets of Metro Manila and the commercial center of Quezon City, even. Bima ang namatay. Almost 40 minutes on gun battle. It was not a misencounter. They knew each other. They realized that they were doing the wrong thing, and yet they continued firing their guns. At this point in time, no investigation is needed. This should all be suspended from the service. Every policeman and PDIA agent involved in the gun battle should be automatically suspended, their guns confiscated, until the investigation is opened. Tama po naman ang presidente. Y salangan dapat maginvestigad. Mag-iinvestigad Kongreso, mag-iinvestigad Senado, mag-iinvestigad Police, mag-iinvestigad PDIA, mag-iinvestigad ang marami pang organisasyon. Eh iba kay iba, iba resulta niyan. The more investigating groups holding their own investigation, the more versions we will hear about the incident. Isa na lang, NBI, the President no less, directing the investigation. Nakakalungkot aminin na ang police ngayon ay handang pumatay ng kapwa police. Ano kami na pigaya awa yan? Ayon sa impormasyon, droga. They are fighting for the spoils of the continuing drug war ngayon. And let's take note of this in this chamber. This is the Congress of the Philippines, and we should take action immediately. Let's not investigate anymore. The PNP is sick. May sakit po ang organisasyon ng ating polisyon. And I am not blaming anyone, but I am blaming the system today where the police is not under the control and supervision of elected local officials. So this incident is not going to stop at Commonwealth. It will continue on. And meanwhile, two Manila policemen disappeared in the past two weeks for reasons unknown. They were picked up by armed men, never came home. And upon ngayon is ated, what's happening to the nation? My message, of course, is in support of the intention of the good Congressman, the Deputy Speaker Abante. But I'd like to add something more important at this point in time. We need to act as a law-making body to make sure that the police is reformed on the spot. Di napupupuytong sloganeering to serve and protect. Who are they serving? Who are they protecting? They're protecting their interests, Madam Speaker. For as long as the police is not accountable to the community today, they will not reform. Once upon a time during the glorious days of Philippine governance, the police was very efficient. They were so efficient, even the policemen from other countries came here to study the methods, the techniques, the strategies, the training of our policemen. Today, we are now becoming the laughing stock of the world. Only in the Philippines, sabi nga nila, where policemen hold a gun battle against fellow policemen. And the reason is very clear. It's within our grasp, Madam Speaker. It's within the hands and control of this Congress. Ibalik natin ang control and supervision ng police sa mga mama maayan. Sa pamamagitan ng kadila mga halal, sa kanika nila nunso at munisipyo. For as long as we have a one centralized police organization answerable only to the President of the Philippines, the policeman will not be respectful of the rights of the citizenry. It's so scandalous that it should move every member of Congress to act immediately. We don't want the police in Mindanao to do battle with fellow policemen and citizens in Mindanao. We don't want policemen in Luzon battling it out with fellow policemen in the different provinces in Luzon. This kind of malady never existed before because the policeman before was answerable to the people. Their slogan, "To serve and protect", was true during the olden years. The words written in the walls of Manila Police Department, "Go spread the word. Tell the passersby that in this little world, men know how to die." Di napunila pa't wedding the meeting ngayon. That in this little world, the policeman is corrupt and involved in the drug problem of the nation. So I'm challenging every member. I'm challenging the Congressman from the Sixth District. Join me in this crusade of restoring the control and supervision of all policemen in the country. Back the elected officials as before. Just for the information of everyone, ito po naman centralized system. Ito'y in umpisahan nong si Missen Marcos ay nagkoconsolidate ng kanyang kapangyarihan. Ayaw niyang meron police na loyal sa mama maayan. Ayaw niyang may police force na meron sandata na maaaring lumaban sa kanya. That was the time when martial law was initiated in the country. The police forces were all consolidated under an integrated national police. Now that we don't have martial law anymore, the framers of the Constitution failed to see that. So that when they adopted the 1987 Constitution, they did not decentralize the police. Only the police functions of the national government was not devolved. Only the police functions of the national government was not devolved to the local government. The Constitution is very clear. It mandates local autonomy. Autonomy shall be given to all local government units. Sabi po nangati saligang batan. Devolved on social welfare, devolved on health department, devolved on education. But the police remains in the hands only of the President, and that's where the problem comes in. The police will never reform if they are not accountable. Accountability promotes responsibility. Responsibility will make them true to their slogan, "To Serve and Protect." Eh, ako pwede po salamat. Ito'y tinalakay. I cannot help but participate. I've been waiting for this topic to be brought on the floor, and we will continue to urge reforms in the police system. The first step should be decentralize the police organization. It cannot remain only in the hands of the President. It should go back to the control of the mayor, the councilors. Na ang taong bayan pagkaargabiado ng police pwedeng magsumbong at action will be taken immediately. Today, the policeman will shrug his shoulder and say, "Magsumbong ka sa lelou mo. Walang mangyayari sa'yo sa pagkatmalakas ako sa organisasyon." Yan ang mangyayari sa atin. Papabayaan ba natin? I say we should act now. The good old saying, "If we don't move now, who else will move?" Pag hindi natin inaksyonan, sino ang aaksyon? Kundi ngayon, kailan pa? Yan ang hamon sa atin lahat. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Abante as well as the manifestation of the Honorable Achenza to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, last to avail of the privilege hour, I move that we recognize the Honorable Robert Ace Barberes to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Robert Ace Barberes is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, your distinguished colleagues, I rise before this august body on personal and collective privilege to express deep dismay and apprehension to the heartbreaking shooting incident on February 24, 2021 that resulted to the loss of lives of our law enforcers. I heard about the incident when the firefight was unfolding on that unfortunate early evening while I was still in my office. I watched it vividly almost in real time from breaking news and video footages that were uploaded on the internet. As I watched the news and the footages, I was deeply dismayed and disappointed to learn that the parties involved in the firefight are our very own frontliners in the fight against illegal drugs. The Philippine Drug Enforcement Agency agents, or PIDEA, and the District Special Operations Unit of the Quezon City Police District, or the QCPD. What was more disgusting and very embarrassing, Madam Speaker, is that it went on for more than an hour while the ensuing news report repeatedly and clearly state that the fighting was between the police and the PIDEA agents. Not only that the news and footage show a clear indication that one side are police officers and the other side belongs to the PIDEA because many of them were visibly wearing uniforms. What was worse, Madam Speaker, is that the PIDEA agents were discriminately targeted. One video footage shows some armed elite police operatives were specifically searching for PIDEA agents inside a comfort room of a nearby fast food restaurant. As you can see in the video footage, it can be seen that, it can be seen from the footage that when someone voluntarily submitted and identified herself as a female PIDEA agent, who even presented her PIDEA identification documents, she was harshly treated like an enemy as she was required to crawl flat on the floor with both hands behind her head. On the other hand, a friendly treatment was accorded to a man who identified himself as a policeman. It appears that this man was not even required to present any identification document as the searching elite police operatives merely took his word for it and then allowed him to leave. Some footages and pictures show that several uniformed PIDEA operatives were rounded up and arrested like criminals. Can you show in the slide, please? Madam Speaker, the police and PIDEA agents involved must have known and identified each other that they both belong to the government. But they did not bother to initiate efforts to immediately cease the exchange of gunfire. As reported in the news, the contending parties finally stopped the shooting only when their respective high-ranking officials personally interceded, which happened more than an hour after it started. It may not be, I may not be privy to the actual situation on the ground, but I am certain that the sustained firefight could be avoided if the applicable rules of engagement and proper protocols are strictly followed. Proper coordination instantly came, came out from my mind while virtually watching the unfolding event. I then surmised that the unfortunate confrontation would not possibly happen if there was proper coordination. What baffles me more, Madam Speaker, was that both the police and the PIDEA claim that there was proper coordination and that they were allegedly conducting legitimate anti-drug operation. Early news reports circulate the version from the police which states that they were conducting a legitimate buy-bust operation, but turned out that they were allegedly transacting agents of the PIDEA. This information must have originated from this sketchy incident, incident report of Quezon City's Batasan Police Station 6, excerpt of which as follows, as you can see in the slide. On the other hand, news reports later circulate the PIDEA's claim that its agents were also conducting a legitimate operation, but I heard no details were mentioned about the incident. With these strikingly conflicting claims, I felt obliged as Chairman of the House Committee on Dangerous Drugs to ask the conformity of majority of the members of the committee to initiate a motopropio inquiry in aid of legislation while I expressed my reaction about the incident in some media outfits where I underscored these alarming events. One, the necessity of proper coordination under Section 86 of Republic Act 9165. And two, the disturbing claim of the Quezon City police operatives involved that the PIDEA agents were selling illegal drugs or as it seems, they were engaging in illegal practice of cell bust. On the early report that the subject of PNP buy-bust allegedly turned out to be PIDEA agents, I am very much outraged, Madam Speaker, because this would mean that the PIDEA is involved in selling illegal drugs and that it is no different from the drug traffickers. This is a factual matter which I will not dwell on for the meantime in deference to the ongoing investigation conducted by the NBI as ordered by our President. I do not wish to belabor as well much about the importance of proper coordination because the PNP and PIDEA organizations are pretty much aware of its essence and necessity. Nevertheless, it is important to highlight for the benefit of every law enforcer and the public in general that the Dangerous Drugs Act of 2002, or Republic Act 9165, mandates the PIDEA, that the PIDEA shall be the lead agency in anti-illegal drug operations and that the PNP is bound to coordinate with the PIDEA in all of its anti-illegal drug operations. And relevant portions of Section 86 of the law expressly states, as you can see in the next slide, "The NBI, the PNP, and the Bureau of Customs shall maintain close coordination with the PIDEA on all drug-related matters," underscoring supplied. To underscore the essence of PIDEA as lead operative in an anti-drug operation, the PNP and the PIDEA entered into a MOA in 2003, or one year after Republic Act 9165 took effect, where the role of the police organization has been clearly defined as mere complement to the PIDEA's mandate, so that it is bound to ensure that all illegal drug operations shall be in coordination with and/or under the direction and control of the PIDEA. The relevant provisions of the 2003 Memorandum of Agreement expressly states the following specific roles of the PNP on operational matters. Next slide, please. On 10, on March 10, 2014, the PNP and the PIDEA renewed their Memorandum of Agreement, reiterating the role of the PNP in anti-illegal drug operations. But unlike the 2003 MOA, the 2014 MOA no longer states expressly that all operations against illegal drugs shall be carried in coordination with and/or under the direction and control of the PIDEA. The latest MOA simply provides a general statement on this matter which states... Next slide, please. It is noticeably clear that had the provisions in the MOA and their respective operational guidelines and/or procedures been religiously complied, the shooting incident last February 24, 2021 would not have happened. However, what is very alarming, Madam Speaker, is that the proper coordination is not much an issue involved in the incident when a mainstream media reported a totally different story from the version claimed by the PNP.
Umakyat na po sa lima ang patay sa madugong shootout sa Commonwealth nitong miyerkules. At matay sa paunang ulat ng National Bureau of Investigation, nasiraan lang daw ng sasakyan ang mga ahente ng PIDEA, kaya pumunta sa kainan kung saan umatake at namarilumano ang mga police. Nakatutok si John Consulta, exclusive.
Mula sa isang source on GMA News, nakuha namin ang CCTV ng isang fast food chain sa Commonwealth. Pasado la singko ng hapon nitong miyerkules, kita ang pagparada ng isang puting kotse sa parking lot ng establishment. Ayon sa initial report na nakuha ng GMA News, papunta sana sa litex ang kotse sa kayang PIDEA asset at isang PIDEA agent para sa buy-bust operation ng biglang mag-overheat, kaya napilitang maglagay ng tubig sa isang fast food chain sa Commonwealth. Habang inaayos ang kanyang sasakyan da'ng 5:45 PM, lumapit ang ilang lalaki at biglang binaril ang asset ng PIDEA na tumumba sa gilid ng kanyang sasakyan. Kita naman ang malapitang barilan ng mga ahente ng PIDEA at mga armadong lalaki sa sasakyan. Dito nabubaba ang iba pang PIDEA agents na gumanti ng putok at napatay ang dalawang armadong lalaki na tinama na tapag alamang mga tauhan ng QCPD Drug Enforcement Unit. Base sa salaysay ng isang saksi, ilang minuto raw natigil ang putukan. Makikita sa cellphone video ng isa sa mga testigo na nasa loob ng fast food chain ang mga PIDEA agents na paikut-ikut sa area. Isa rito si PIDEA Agent Rankin Gano na nakapulang shorts. Nang maisakay na sa van ang kanilang asset at PIDEA agent, aalis na sana sa parking lot ang mga ahente ng PIDEA para itakbo sila sa ospital. Pero bigla silang pinaulanan ng bala at muli nagsimula ang putukan. Pagkatapos ng mahigit isang oras na palitan ng putok, napatay ang PIDEA agent na si Gano at isa sa kanilang asset. Base sa salaysay ng mga nakapanigan ng NBI na dumating ang reinforcement ng PIDEA na remisponen sa crime scene, biglaraw dinis armahan ang mga ito at pinagbubog ng mga amrestong police. Nakakuha ang GMA News ng co-op ng Authority to Operate ng PIDEA bilang patunay na lihitimo ang kanilang operasyon. Gate naman ng QCPD, lihitimo rin ang kanilang operasyon. Patunay ang hawak nilang mga dokumento tulad ng coordination sa PIDEA. Hawak naman ng NBI ang affidavit ng tatlong civilian witness na makakatulong sa pagibigay ginaw sa nangyari.
We thank the President for his complete trust with the NBI. As always, the NBI will stand to the challenge. There are other chiefs, na tinawagan ni Director Eric Christor, with strict orders to push through with this case and make sure that this case is resolved with impartiality, utmost impartiality.
The interesting report that came out in primetime evening news on February 26, 2021, Madam Speaker, also presented a revealing video footage that shows how the incident started, followed by the actual blow-by-blow firefight that apparently resulted to instantaneous fatalities of at least three persons. I do not wish to preempt the outcome of an impartial investigation of this incident, particularly on the veracity and authenticity of this video footage, but I am afraid that the footage, if verified and authenticated, will have a very alarming implication and perhaps dangerous impact on the government's law enforcement efforts against illegal drugs. First, it belies the earlier claim of the QCPD police operatives that they were conducting a legitimate buy-bust operation. The incident was precipitated by the menacing act of a gun-wielding man who approached some individuals who were not doing anything unusual or illegal inside the stalled vehicle. What ensued afterwards was the shooting incident, which again, I would not wish to dwell on in deference to the ongoing investigation of the NBI. But I cannot avoid expressing my intense apprehension that the incident signifies a very chilling effect to the public. It shows that law enforcers whom the citizens rely on for protection can just intrude, apprehend, or perhaps kill someone without hesitation. And worse, may it appear to be a legitimate police operation by claiming it was a legitimate buy-bust operation with complete coordination and pre-operational documents. I am afraid, Madam Speaker, that those documents were consciously prepared to cover up an apparently questionable, if not illegal, police action on that fateful evening of February 24, 2021. Second, the news report together with the video footage would also create a chilling effect to valuable assets or informants and effectively discourage them from cooperating with dedicated law enforcers in fighting against illegal drugs. With the deplorable action shown in the footage and with the apparently documented cover-up story, Madam Speaker, it will come out that an otherwise valuable informant will end up losing his or her life or charged and jailed because of a bogus illegal drug operation. Finally, I am not counting out the possibility that in that fateful incident, a drug syndicate or perhaps some cuddlers or protectors are behind it because a deep scrutiny of the incident may lead to the question of who will stand to benefit from it. Certainly, it is the drug syndicate that greatly benefited from the incident since the PIDEA's planned buy-bust operation failed and the asset informant was permanently eliminated. Those are some of the countless concerns and apprehensions that are very real while fighting against illegal drugs. These are also some of the underlying reasons why our House Committee on Dangerous Drugs has sought to investigate in aid of legislation. I finally take this opportunity, Madam Speaker, to state that the proposed amendment to the Republic Act 9165, which has just passed on third reading, is timely and appropriate to deal with alarming incidents like what happened last February 24, 2021. I say this to underscore that the proposed legislation does not only seek to give force and power to go after the drug syndicates, including their fine financiers and cuddlers or protectors, but also ensure that scalawags in our law enforcement organizations will no longer have a place in our society. Thank you again, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader, and thank you, my dear colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Robert Ace Barberes to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, all our local bills for establishment of hospital... Um, Madam Speaker, I move to terminate the privilege hour.
Are there any objections? Are there any objections? The Chair here's none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, all our local bills for establishment of hospital. I move for the consideration on third and final reading of the following House Bill 8668, 8758, 8759. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of bills for the establishment of hospitals.
House Bill 8668, an act establishing a general hospital in the municipality Avignon Nueva, province of Misamis Oriental, to be known as the Northeastern Misamis General Hospital, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 8758, an act converting the San Jose District Hospital in the municipality of San Jose, province of Occidental Mindoro, into a general hospital to be known as the Southern Occidental Mindoro General Hospital, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8759, an act establishing the municipality of Limay, province of Bataan, a general hospital to be known as the Limay General Hospital, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Numbers 8668, 8758, 8759. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwegsaldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsensa, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barberst, Barba, Baronda, Bersaga, Baskuk, Bautista, Bautista Bandiga, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fedinil, Kaytano Alan Peter Campañero, Kaytano Mariala Arney, Celeste, Chato, Chipeko, Tungalaw, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Coangco, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Culyamat, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Duhalley, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael III, D. Ian Paul, Epcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Hermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Fer Juliet, Fer Luis Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Bella, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Go Ed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Grugetta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Jarezco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Jimenez, Co, Elisa, Co, Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim, Lim Kaitchong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerco, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Waminal, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Olivares, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwana Disson, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rehelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramirez Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaría, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmento, Sauluk, Sevillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mian, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tanalisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Shurni, Tejada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ummali Alfonso, Ummali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villiaras Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikarat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call for House Bill Number 8668, 8758, 8759. Honorable Members, Abaya, Abelianosa, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Aginaldo, Albano, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Arenas, Umentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Bernos, Biazon, Biron, Bondok, Bulot, Cabredo, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri, Castelo, Tungalaw, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Coangco, Dalipe, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Michael, Duavit, Duhalley, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael III, Erise, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Flores, Garin, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Go Ed, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Jarezco, Herrera D., Halushos, Javier, Co, Wilton, Kong Hun, Lia Chon, Makapagalaroyo, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Waminal, Ong Jose, Ordanes, Pichai, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Romaldo, Sagarbaría, Sakaluran, Salceda, Silverio, Singson, Suarez Aleta, Si Alvarado, Talyado, Tanalisa, Tan Shamir, Tan Shurni, Teves Arnulfo, Tiyanko, Torres Gomez, Ti Alan, Uy Juliet, Vargas Alfonso, Veloso, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villiar, Villiaras Suarez, Villiarica, Yap Victor, Zamora Waikarat, Zubiri.
With 197 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Numbers 8668, 8758, and 8759 are hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration of... Consideration for third and final reading of the following House Bill 8726, 8728, 8729. All our local bills for establishment of Testa Center. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. Move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bills on the establishment of Testa Centers and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 8726, an act establishing in the municipality of Nabua, Ringconada District, province of Camarinesur, a technical education and skills development authority, training and assessment center to be known as the Ringconada Camarinesur Testa Training and Assessment Center, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8728, an act establishing in the city of Ligau, province of Albay, a technical education and skills development authority, training and assessment center, to be known as the Ligau-Albay Testa Training and Assessment Center, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8729, an act establishing in the municipality of Jordan, province of Guimarães, a technical education and skills development authority, provincial training and assessment center, to be known as the Guimarães Testa Province Provincial Training and Assessment Center, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 8726, 8728, and 8729. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwegsaldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsensa, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barberst, Baronda, Bersaga, Baskuk, Bautista, Bautista Bandiga, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fedinil, Kaytano Alan Peter Campañero, Kaytano Mariala Arney, Celeste, Chato, Chipengo, Tungalaw, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Coangco, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Culyamat, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Duhalley, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael III, D. Ian Paul, Epcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Hermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Fer Juliet, Fer Luis Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Bella, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Go Ed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Grusetta, Giko, Gulyas, Jarezco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Jimenez, Co, Wilton, Co, Elisa, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim, Lim Kaitchong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapita, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerco, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Waminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwana Disson, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rehelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramirez Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaría, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmento, Sauluk, Sevillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mian, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tanalisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Shurni, Tejada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ummali Alfonso, Ummali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villiaras Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikarat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call for House Bill Numbers 8726, 8728, and 8729. Abaya, Abelianosa, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Aginaldo, Albano, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Arenas, Umentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Bernos, Biazon, Biron, Bondok, Bulot, Cabredo, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri, Castelo, Tungalaw, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Coangco, Dalipe, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Michael, Duavit, Duhalley, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael III, Erise, Farinyas, Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Flores, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Go Ed, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Jarezco, Herrera D., Halushos, Javier, Co, Wilton, Kong Hun, Lia Chon, Makapagalaroyo, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariño, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Waminal, Ong Jose, Ordanes, Pichai, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Romaldo, Sagarbaría, Sakaluran, Salceda, Silverio, Singson, Suarez Aleta, Si Alvarado, Talyado, Tanalisa, Tan Shamir, Tan Shurni, Torres Gomez, Ti Alan, Uy Juliet, Vargas Alfonso, Veloso, Velasco, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villiar, Villiaras Suarez, Villiarica, Yap Victor, Zubiri.
With 202 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Numbers 8726, 8728, and 8729 are hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, all our local legislative franchises, I move for the consideration for third and final reading of the following House Bill 8753, 8755, and may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bills on local legislative franchises and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 8753, an act granting the Happy Jockey Club Incorporated a franchise to construct, operate, and maintain race tracks for horse racing in the province of Batangas, Laguna, and Cavite. House Bill Number 8755, an act granting Sulu Tawi Tawi Broadcasting Foundation Incorporated a franchise to construct, install, operate, maintain radio and television stations in the provinces of Sulu and Tawi Tawi. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 8753 and 8755. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwegsaldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsensa, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barberst, Baronda, Bersaga, Baskuk, Bautista, Bautista Bandiga, Bautista Bendiga, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bravo, Brosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderón, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatanu Alan Peter Compañero, Kayatanu Mariala Arnie, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Coangelica, Coelisaldi, Kuankoh, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuah, Quaresma, Cueva, Culiamac, Tagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Dasa, De Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Los Montalias, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo, Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Duhalii, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, De Ian Paul, Ebkas, Ekleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermita Buhan, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Faríñez Ria, Faríñez Rudy Caesar, Fernández Fernando, Ferr Juliet, Ferr Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Bella, Gaite, Garbin, García Enrique, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasitaya, Gachalyan, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, González Aurelio Dong, González Neptali, González Sandro, Gruseta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco,